Being in attendance at your city council meeting. We've got a lot of special folks here I'm going to introduce in a minute, but first, Terry, I'll get you to call the roll.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Here.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Here.
Vice Mayor State.
Here.
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 Want to welcome everybody this evening. Looking to see if we've got any elected officials in attendance, and I don't see any. But we've got a lot of great young people here to help us this evening. First off, I'm going to introduce Boy Scout Troop 107, under the direction of Scout Masters Kevin Singleton, Toni Morell, and Rick Cox. We've also got Chuck Williams, one of the Scout Masters is going to lead us in the invocation here in just a few minutes. On the other side of the aisle here, we have the Tech Girls from the YWCA, under the direction of Tammy Hinkle. These young ladies all go to Bristol, Tennessee City Schools. The Scouts are kind of spread out in both the county and city schools, and they operate their Scout Troop out of Coal Springs Presbyterian Church. So with that, I'll ask Scout Master Chuck Williams if you'll lead us in our invocation, and when he finishes, ladies, you'll lead us in our pledge. If you'll please stand with me.
Let us pray. Dear God, we come before you this evening with humble and grateful hearts. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given this city over the years. And, Lord, how you've spared us from these recent storms. We thank you for our city council members that are willing to give up their time and to tend to the matters of this city, Lord. We pray for the concerned citizens that are gathered here this evening and discuss the matters that will affect us all. We just ask for wisdom and discernment, and that you would guide this meeting tonight, that this meeting be conducted with the spirit of honor and respect. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate the prayer to get it started off right. Remind everybody, if you've got a cell phone, make sure it's turned off right now, or put on buzz. You're going to have an opportunity throughout the meeting for several times that you can speak on any matters that are on the agenda. I'll be sure to call the attention of those things as those come along. You'll also have an opportunity, if there's something that is not on this specific agenda, but it's something that you want to speak to city council and those up here, and our city manager about, you'll have an opportunity here in just a few minutes to come to the podium and do that. And with that, Mr. Broughton, would you tell us if we've got any agenda changes, or additions or deletions?
No, the agenda is unchanged from what was distributed, so we're ready to act on what you have before we begin.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. First thing up this evening is something that's awfully special. We're going to have a recognition of our Citizens Municipal Academy, and I think, Mr. Broughton, are you going to say something while Terry and I head to the podium?
I am. I am. Thank you. In fact, I will. The city of Bristol has, for the last four years now, offered a municipal academy that's called the Citizens Municipal Academy, and this is one where many of the departments of the city come together over a six-week period to make presentations regarding the operations of those respective areas. And they include the Police Department has one evening, the Fire Department has one evening, Public Works Utilities has one evening, Community Development and Economic Development has one evening, Parks and Rec Leisure Services is the fifth, the sixth is Finance and General Administration. It all culminates in a graduation ceremony, if we can be so bold to call it a graduation, for the participants of that program. And this is really a commitment of time. Each of those six meetings all probably took close to three hours, I would guess. So there were eighteen, close to twenty hours' worth of time that members of our community came together because they had enough interest to want to learn more and understand more about how the city government functions. So tonight, our program coordinator, Terry Talbert, along with Mayor Shoemaker, are going to present the certificates of participation to the 2012 class. So we'll read these off in order of alphabetical order for those who are in attendance. If you'll please step up to the podium, and we'll start with Nancy Cook. Nancy? Matthew Mills?
Matthew?
Before you get away, I want to take, Walt Stickley goes to both city council meetings and some of the council meetings. He's at every single meeting that we've had in half of the long time. And I'm embarrassed, and I wouldn't let him slip away.
And also participating in the class, been able to be here tonight, is David Akerd III and George Rogers. And, what, did I miss somebody?
Cindy Green.
Cindy Green, I'm sorry, Cindy. Come on up. I can't even read my own screen there. Cindy was the valedictorian this year. So if everybody would join us in welcoming and thanking for the class of 2012.
All right, we don't have any presentations or public hearings this evening, so we're going to go right on to appearance of citizens. This is the opportunity for folks in attendance this evening, if you want to speak to the city council on anything that's on your mind, now's the opportunity to do so. All you have to do is come to the podium and tell us who you are, where you live, and what you need to talk about.
Good evening. My name's Marty Lowery. I live in Bristol, Virginia, right across the state line, which might lead you to wonder why I'm at the Tennessee Bristol Council meeting, but I know the cities share a lot of the same services. Particularly, I'm here for the plight of some dogs and cats. I might become known as the dog guy. First thing I'd like to do would be to charge some of these Boy Scouts down here with, since you're so young, to get out here in the neighborhood and check on the dogs and cats. Somebody has to do that. I had a little dog named Ozzy. He was a husky shepherd. I got him in 1993, lived to 2006. His name was Ozzy, named after Ozzy Smith, famous shortstop, famous shortstop for the St. Louis Cardinals. And when he passed away, a few years after that, I wrote, got in contact with Ozzy's agent up in St. Louis, since I used to live there, went to the World Series there, and told him about little Ozzy. And his agent got in touch with big Ozzy, and asked if there was any way I could maybe get an autograph or some kind of memento. So I didn't think anything of it. And a few months later, the mailman came by, and I looked in my mailbox, and there was an autograph calendar from Ozzy Smith, Hall of Fame of 2002, to the family of Ozzy Lowery. So I thought that was really nice, that Ozzy Smith would take some time out of his busy schedule to recognize his namesake. But the reason I'm here is, I don't have a dog now. I have a cat named Rocco that I rescued from out at the country club. If you're familiar with him, he was in the papers a couple of years back. His brother Tiger was the country club mascot, and he was my buddy. And I'll try not to get emotional here, but little Tiger, they eventually found him, they found him on the roof of the country club, and he had been struck by lightning and killed. So he was the last of eight cats in a family out there that had been abandoned. And so after he died, that left one cat, and that was Rocco. I named him after the famous golfers, Tiger Woods and Rocco Mediate and Anika Sorenstam. Four of them got picked up by Animal Control. Anika, the mother, died in a hole in the wall, suffocated to death in the cart barns at the country club. Tiger got struck by lightning. I took Rocco home with me. He lives at my house now. He's my little buddy now. So I rescued him, I've got him at my house. The reason I'm here, I want to take up so much of your time, is I go, I drive by, I came down the street the other day at the corner doghouse on Mary Street on the Virginia side, and I saw a little dog tied to a telephone pole, tied to a clothesline pole, and it had about this much room to move. It couldn't move. So I pulled the car over, and I got out, and I went and knocked on the door, and I said, "Are you responsible for this dog?" The lady came to the door, she said, "Yes." She said somebody had abandoned it on them, it came up on their property, they'd come by and checked on it, apparently nobody cared about it. I told her, "Ma'am, this is not acceptable. This dog can't be tied to a pole with this much room, where it doesn't have free roam to be able to eat and drink." And she apologized. Since then, I've been working with her. I went by, I took it to leash, I took it to doghouse. I take, I go by there like today, and I walked it. Yesterday, I walked it around the block, and before I could get around the block, I came across one house, and this being a little female dog, I walked it by the house, and six dogs came out to the fence on this one dog. And the nature of dogs is that if there's several dogs in one yard, and they're going to fuss at another dog, one dog's going to be in charge, and it's going to be jealous, and it's going to show the rest of the dogs who's the boss. And that's the case that happened yesterday. Five little dogs had the other dog down at the fence tearing it to shreds. And I went back to see if it was okay and to break it up, and about the time I did, the lady came out of the house. And I said, "Is this dog all right?" And she said, "Yeah, it's all right." She said, "But don't be walking your dog up and down through here." She got on me and blamed me, as if it was my fault that she had. I said, "Are your dogs registered?" And she said, "Yeah, they're registered." She acted like she had a problem with me even checking that these dogs are registered. So the reason I'm here, I called, and I know that when you pick up a dog in Bristol, Virginia, it comes to Bristol, Tennessee. It goes to Jones Animal Hospital, if I'm not mistaken, which leads me to the question of, why does Bristol, Virginia not have a shelter for their own dogs on the Virginia side? Why are dogs brought from Virginia into Tennessee? And why we have one animal welfare officer, one animal control officer, from what I understand, on the Virginia side, and I think we have two on the Tennessee side, in a city this size? And my question is, who is responsible for the dogs and the cats? Mostly the dogs, because cats are, they roam free. They do pretty much what they want to. But dogs, who goes to the house and checks on the dog and says, "This dog's out in the sun too long. This dog doesn't have water. This dog's on a three-foot chain. This dog is not in acceptable condition. It's living in the mud. It's living in its own feces. It's living in its own urine." Who do we have to do that? I don't think we have anybody. I think we could afford to hire someone that's an animal welfare officer, not an animal control officer, that just says, "Hey, there's two dogs over here fighting," or "This dog's been dropped off. We need to pick it up and take it down, and we keep it ten days, and if nothing happens, we put it to sleep." But somebody had to care for the dogs that are actually out there, because you would not believe the people that I go by that are not caring properly for a dog, that have it in these absurd conditions. And nobody's allowed to just knock on the door and say, "Hey, this is not right for this dog. I've rescued him all my life. I've pulled him out of bad conditions all my life, and I've took him to the pound, and I've paid to get him out, and I've found him homes," which I'm in the process of doing with this little dog right now. So that's what I'm going to do. And I don't know where I go with this, or how it gets done, or do we get a petition started saying, "Do we need a welfare, an animal welfare officer, and somebody that goes to the houses?" I'm sure some of y'all have dogs and cats, and I'm sure they're probably well taken care of, that you wouldn't put your dog in that kind of condition. But I don't have a dog anymore. I worked through my old dog, Ozzy. He sends me to do this stuff. So that's why I'm here. And as far as an unneutered male dog running around and impregnating females, the law in Virginia says that if that's the case, and that's what's happening, that that male dog is allowed to run free and do whatever he wants to do. And if you have a female dog, and it comes into heat, and there's a chance that it may get pregnant, that you better keep that dog put up. It's your responsibility to keep the female out of harm's way, that the male is allowed to run free, unneutered, which is an absurd law to me. If a male's caught running free, unneutered, he needs to have it clipped and put back on the street where he won't multiply anymore. So that's where I'm at on that. It's not the last you'll see of me. I'll be back. I'm going to try to find out where I go to get this started, and how to get some things done on it, and how to take care of these dogs there. Because my opinion is, people have other people to look out for them and take care of them, but dogs don't have anybody. They don't have anybody. Which, I'll leave you now, I wrote a little poem, and I memorized it myself, and it says, "Why do you treat me like a dog? You know, dogs are people too, when all I ask for my short little life is to spend my days with you. You put a chain around my neck, or shove me into a cage, and then wonder why, when you don't come around, I work myself into a rage. You leave me dirty water to drink, and yell at me to shut up, forgetting all the fun we had when I was just a little pup. All that I need is a small patch of yard, and a ball with which I can play, because one day soon, the Lord will call me home, and you'll wish I was here today." So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lowery. We've got, if you stay to the end of the meeting, we'll have our city manager speak with you. We will go over those things that we're doing on the Tennessee side of town. Unfortunately, we can only take care of our side of the town, but this might be an opportunity. I'll bet you if Liza Conway doesn't know you, she will soon. We have a citizen advocate in our audience that does what you do on the Virginia side.
I think she's a no-chain lady, right?
Yeah, she is. So I think we'll be speaking at the end of the council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Lowery, for coming. Does there anyone else wish to speak to council on any matter? You'll please come to the podium and tell us who you are.
Good evening, excuse me. My name is Stanley Harrelson. I am a Bristolian. Actually, I grew up on the Virginia side, junior high, Virginia High. Right after that, I joined the military, spent twenty, well, well over twenty years in, and I retired as a first sergeant. I don't want to get into it too much, but I know that when I looked up, the city council on the website says you're responsible for the judiciary side of some things, and I have a huge problem. My thought was, when I was a younger soldier in, stationed in Germany, just before I left for the Gulf War, Sheriff Honaker was my neighbor. And we all know, I don't, well, I don't know if everybody knows, but Sheriff Honaker did some things he shouldn't have done. He's not with us today. So we do know that not everybody that sits on a panel, or myself, is perfect. But I decided, when I retired, I wanted to move to the Tennessee side. I thought, okay, I'll move to the Tennessee side. I like it better over here. But I do believe that your judiciary system is not working. It's not working well at all. I don't know what it is. I don't know if a judge needs to have an IQ of four. I don't know, I apologize for that, but I just don't understand what's going on. I don't want to get into it with a lot of these young people in the audience, but I'm having a lot of issues with your judiciary side of the council, and if there is any way that I can get with you on that, or get with anybody that may be able to help me figure out what the problem is, or, you know, I don't want to move to, back to the Virginia side. I'd rather stay over here. But that's all I wanted to have.
Mr. Harrelson, if you'll wait, and let's meet with you after the council meeting, and see if it's something that is city or county. Most of the judicial side of it goes through Sullivan County, so it may be, depending on the issue, it may be something we can help you with or direct you to someone on the county side.
That would be fine. That'd be fine. Also, I did want to say, I emailed Ms. Dolan, I believe, I emailed you, said something about you may need a veteran for something. I am at your disposal if you need me. So, thank you all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harrelson. Anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, we'll move on then with appointments to boards and commissions. We've got one appointment tonight. Mr. Broughton, if you'll tell us about that?
Yes, you actually have two vacancies in the Bristol Housing and Redevelopment Authority. You have one candidate who has submitted her application in timely manner for consideration tonight, and that person is Donna Felty, and she's seeking a reappointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board for a five-year term of office, which ends 2017, March 31st, 2017.
All right, thank you, Mr. Broughton. Is there anybody on city council that would like to speak on behalf of Donna Felty?
I will. Yeah, Donna serves both on our Community Development Advisory Board, and has served one five-year term on our housing authority. And those boards are complimentary. It's very nice to have that coordination. She's the only person who serves on both of those. And she is at King College. She works with the students with their internships, and is a community liaison, and is very committed. So she's a great person to serve on this committee, and a great community member with the work she does. Thank you.
And also, I'm on the board of, I believe, in Bristol, and we have asked Ms. Felty to serve as the board member, and she has accepted that position as well, so we're proud to have her on the board.
Sounds like she needs something to do.
That's true.
For a five-year term of office on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Mr. Zandi votes for Ms. Felty, Mr. Stateen votes for Ms. Felty, Mr. Shoemaker votes for Ms. Felty, Ms. Dolan votes for Ms. Felty, and Ms. Fire Robin also votes for Ms. Felty. Donna Felty is reappointed to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Moving on to, next on our agenda is ordinances and resolutions. First one being first reading of new ordinances, ordinance 12-2. Mr. Broughton?
Ordinance number 12-2 is an ordinance to amend Section 34-26A of the Code of Ordnances regarding fire prevention codes. The council will recall, a meeting or two ago, we asked and you consented in the adoption of the latest international building codes, which are adopted on a three-year cycle. What we're asking you to approve tonight is similar in that action, and that's to update our National Fire Protection Association fire codes for the next, adopt the latest round, which is the 2012 version of those codes, which will remain, which will be updated again three years out. The NFPA codes are used not in our building construction activity, but by our fire prevention and inspection program folks, to ensure that existing buildings comply with code requirements related to fire prevention and safety. Basically, this will have no impact, no effect on any existing building, but rather, for new buildings that are constructed, the new code that'll be adopted by action, as we're asking for you to approve tonight, will then apply to those new buildings as they are constructed going forward in time. So this, in a lot of ways, is somewhat of a housekeeping matter. It's to keep our codes current, which is always a good thing to do. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Is there anybody on council who has a question, or needs some further clarification from our staff? Hearing none, is there anyone in attendance this evening who wishes to speak to city council on this matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Joe and Margaret, for the second. Additional discussion by council then? Ms. Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State.
Next up, adoption of ordinances and second reading. We have one, ordinance 12-1. Mr. Broughton?
Ordinance number 12-1 is an ordinance to abandon an unimproved portion of Sprint Drive as a public right-of-way. The abandonment action that's being requested for your approval tonight was one that the Planning Commission evaluated, as it does with all such actions, at its meeting of January 23rd, and they recommended that you proceed with the action. What this action is, it will abandon an unimproved section of the right-of-way between 115 and 140 Sprint Drive. It's about 373 feet. Sherry, if you can bring up the next drawing. There's a aerial photograph that shows Sprint Drive coming off 394. It ends in a cul-de-sac, and the area that's depicted in black on the aerial photograph is the right-of-way that's proposed for abandonment. Again, there is no improvement in the road. It's just a future right-of-way that was platted in the event that that road would ever be extended. Given the development, however, of the area, the need to ever expand, carry that road forward has, is no longer necessary, and because of that, the adjacent owners have requested that that property be abandoned. Again, the Planning Commission has recommended that you proceed in that direction, and we concur in that recommendation, too.
All right, thank you, Mr. Broughton. Is there any clarification or additional questions needed of staff? Hearing none, is there anyone in attendance this evening who wished to address the city council on this particular matter? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to move forward.
Second.
We'll go with you being on the first, and Joe on the second. We do have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion by city council? Hearing none, Ms. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor State. Yes.
Thank you. We're moving on then to resolutions. We have one resolution, Resolution 12-23. Mr. Broughton?
Resolution number 12-23 is a resolution approving tax-equivalent payments. Every year, Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services goes through a calculation as to the amount of taxes that they would pay if they were a taxable entity, which is called, and that calculation results in what is called a tax-equivalent payment. And that's the value of the, basically, it's for the services, the governmental services they receive, they make a payment to all of the governments in which their facilities are located, and that includes not only the city of Bristol, but it also includes Sullivan County, and includes Bluff City, includes Washington County, Virginia, as well. So they go through that calculation each year, and it's a formula, it's established under Tennessee code, to determine what that value is, that they should pay for the benefits that they receive from the governments in which they're located, as I said. This year, the calculation results in a total tax-equivalent payment of $2,136,792, which is divided by the different business lines that they operate under the statutory formula that's set up for calculation. So there's little over $2 million of that payment. So there's a little over $2 million of that payment is coming from their electrical assets, their telecommunications assets, about $82,000, and the cable and internet asset, $42,000. So all that money comes, is to be paid, once you approve the payment of those, and they get distributed, as is shown in the material that has been presented to you. In terms of what we're most interested in as a city, because our budget is balanced with the knowledge of this money coming in, we'll receive $1.6 million of that total payment, and that's obviously because the bulk of their operations and their capital assets and business activities coming from the city of Bristol. So with your approval of this resolution, that will call for those payments to be made. Again, our budget is predicated on the receipt of that. I'm sure the other budgets were built with the expectation as well. And the payment is due before the end of the fiscal year, which means the payment must be made by June 30, no later than June 30th of this year. With that, we ask for your approval, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Broden. Any clarification needed by council? Any questions to staff? Anyone in attendance then wish to speak to city council on this particular matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you, Margaret and Michelle. We have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? Terry, we're moving right along tonight. Let's have the vote.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Thank you. Last up then is the consent agenda, and this is, with the consent agenda, we lumped together a lot of purchases and other matters that we vote on as a whole. We don't discuss these items, these purchasing police cars, whatever. Ms. Broden, if you'll tell us about that, and see if any member of council has any they wish to pull.
I'd be happy to. The consent agenda includes 12 items tonight. Let me read them as is required. Includes the minutes of the February 7th city council meeting, the minutes of the February 21st city council work session, includes Resolution 12-14, which approves a grant contract with the state of Tennessee for storm damage assistance, includes Resolution 12-15, which authorizes payment for environmental engineering and disposal services associated with an underground storage tank, includes Resolution 12-16, authorizing the submittal of an application for grant funding to the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation under the Clean Tennessee Energy Grant Program, includes Resolution 12-17, awarding a bid for a roof replacement project, Resolution 12-18, authorizing the submittal of an application from grant funding under the Safe Routes to School Program, includes Resolution 12-19, awarding a bid for the purchase of radar units, includes Resolution 12-20, awarding a bid for an elevator upgrade, includes Resolution 12-21, awarding bids for the purchase of police pursuit vehicles, includes Resolution 12-22, awarding bids for water plant treatment chemicals, and finally, includes Resolution 12-24, awarding bids for the purchase of fire equipment and fire turnout gear.
Thank you, Ms. Broden. Is there any member of council who would like to pull any of these so that we could discuss it? Anyone other than me would like to pull one of these so that we can discuss it? That would be 12-21, police pursuit vehicles.
Never fails.
With that said then...
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with 12-21.
Second, Margaret, and thank you, Joel. Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Resolution 12-21, a resolution awarding bid for the purchase of police pursuit vehicles. This is an item that happens every year, when we identify the replacement requirements of our vehicle fleet in the police department, and go through the bidding process to acquire the vehicles at the lowest price available. This year, the low bidder was Sam Swope Auto Group LLC, and they're located in Memphis, and their low bid amount was $21,832.55 per vehicle. And what that'll buy us is the 2012 Dodge Charger, police chargers that are set up and equipped with police package, the police package, that is designed specifically for police operations. The package price that we purchased included two options, and those are the headlight and tail flashers that will be installed as a part of the delivery of the vehicles when they come. We had eight bidders this year that submitted with, as I mentioned, Sam Swope being the lowest. This year, what we're asking is a little different, and perhaps the reason for Mayor Shoemaker's reason to pull it off and ask. We're planning to buy eight vehicles initially with this purchase authority, if you approve it tonight. The way we bid the vehicles this year is in the past, but the approach this year is going to be a little different, where we may, given how things shake out going forward, we may ask Sam Swope to honor their bid price for more than eight vehicles, and offer the same bid award, because every time we bid them, you know, prices go up. And because we have the authority under the bidding document that we initiated to buy more than eight, we'll initially place an order of eight with your approval tonight, with the understanding and thought that we may go ahead and buy our 2013 budgeted amount from this same authorization, at the same price of $21,832.55 a vehicle. So right now, we're only, we will be only placing a bid for eight vehicles, but there's a good likelihood we will buy another seven or eight, or whatever the number is that's planned for next year, if it makes sense, when we're at a position to make that decision. To the question of what kind of engines do these cars have? The Dodge Charger has a 220 cubic inch, six-cylinder motor. It's, of the three police pursuit vehicles that are typically offered in the states for law enforcement agencies to choose, all of them are six-cylinder. They, it just so happens, the Dodge Charger has the best fuel mileage of the three options that are available. Just so happened to turn out that way.
Well, it just, you know what? Gosh, I've been taking you to school for the last year.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Double second.
No discussion?
Thank you. My question, of course, which engine, what fuel economy? You didn't say, it is regular gas, I assume?
Yes.
All right, all right, good deal. I already had my numbers ready. The difference between 19 and 22 miles per gallon, I had that ready. Good job, Mr. Broden. Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Delighted. City manager's report. We finished with our agenda. For those scouts in attendance, you know what? It just wasn't that much excitement tonight, was there? Usually, we have a lot more kind of give and take, sort of debate issues and that sort of thing. This was just a real short agenda. Nobody got too upset, nobody argued tooth and nail, and I was ready to go on the police cars. But anyway, if you'll stay a few more minutes, we'll have a few announcements, and then we'll finish up. Mr. Broden?
You know, I have nothing to report formally, and nothing really comes to mind readily that would be of value to share tonight, so I'll just pass on the report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
Go ahead, Margaret.
I'll go ahead, and don't forget, you're going to call on the schools, right?
That's right. I believe that we have some school folks in attendance this evening that probably are doing duty for Gary Lilly tonight.
Becky Adams, and did Seymour Bradley?
We have a robotic team that will be helping to make sure that we're all at school, so we're very proud of you.
How'd the Shoemaker boy do? I think he did pretty well on that tan.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. I just wanted to say congratulations again to our municipal academy folks, and also our graduates, and also to thank our city staff for doing that. It does take extra time to do it. I think most people enjoy doing it, and we also have our fire academy and our police academy, and I think those folks enjoy sharing their enthusiasm for their work and their job with our community members. And just, it's really, really important for people to understand our government, to understand how it benefits, where our money goes, where our tax money goes, how we are very fiscally responsible. Really important for folks to have a good understanding, so I encourage other people to take the class as well, and thank you, Mr. Broden, for continuing to offer that. And I assume people can go ahead and inquire on the website, or call the office if they want to know, get ready to sign up for the next one. And I would encourage, if they register on the website, if they don't hear back from us, to check in, because I heard somebody who thought they were registered but never heard anything, so sometimes those have law hangups. Also, a couple of school news. I just wanted to congratulate the school for taking on the Community Service Day, for Austin Arnold, who recognized somebody's life, one of their fellow students, how important that was, and what great participation they had in honoring his life, and a very successful event. And also, congratulations to Tennessee High for their hosting the state student council this weekend. That's pretty exciting to have people at this end of the state and going. And I was out of town and missed the Synthetic Drug Forum. Really important for us to understand what's going on in our community, and for parents to understand, and to exercise their parental roles in paying attention to their children and offering guidance with something that is really serious and epidemic in our community. The state is working on the legislation, we are working on what we can do, but it also is really important for parents and teachers and community folks to talk with kids and to set good examples and help them make good decisions. That's it, other than if somebody else is going to talk about a race coming up.
Is there a race?
Is there a race? It's March.
It's Bristol, baby.
Who else?
Ben can say that. Can you say it's Bristol, baby?
Sure is Bristol, baby.
Southern accent of yours always gets...
I'm an Appalachian boy.
Ms. Michelle, do you have anything?
I would just like to show my support for the United States Army, and also for all of our military personnel. I am a citizen of influence for the United States Army, and in January, I was invited to go to the All-American Bowl. And if you don't know what that is, they take the very best of the best football players throughout the country, and they play East versus West. And also included in that is the best of the best musicians. And it was a very exciting trip. I got to see a lot of excellence, and I think that that's one thing that the Army definitely stands for, is excellence. Being a citizen of influence, I'm basically a liaison between the military and the community. The Army is very interested in being more involved within the community, and also in helping the community, and some of the ways that they help is with education. They have some really good educational programs to help students graduate from high school. Also, just to give you a heads up, the regulations for getting into the military are very stringent. As of today, only one out of four high school students would actually qualify to get into the military, and that's because of physical fitness tests that they have to take, physical activities, and you have to be drug-free to get into the military, and no criminal record. So the bar is set really high for the military, and there's a good reason. The pay is good, the training is excellent. If you can get through basic training, you can do anything in life. They will pay for your college, and it has great opportunities, not just for the front line, but they have jobs open in all different kinds of fields. So for people that are getting out of high school, looking for a career, it is a great career, if you measure up, and also, if you're looking for a part-time job, there's the reserves. And also, I will be coordinating a military advocacy group, so if anyone is interested in either leading that or participating in that, it's for people who are currently or past military. Please go to the Bristol, Tennessee website, and my email is on there, and shoot me an email. And also, if you are a business owner in the community, I strongly urge you to consider hiring veterans and Army Reserve people. For one thing, it will get young people coming back to this community, and they're just well-trained and well-disciplined, and so they make excellent employees, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Anyone else? I'll just say, folks, we'll see you all at the races next week. Thanks to Jerry Cunningham, all those folks in BMS for doing a great job of making sure that folks from everywhere are welcome here. We'll do our part, I know that you will, too, and folks, we are adjourned.